I call this meeting to order and please all rise for the pleasure legion.
My pleasure is to live in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. We're gonna go right into the public hearing. Due to the present crowd that is here, I'm not gonna go through and read too much of the notice of the public hearing. It has to do with a grant, an implementation grant for the Graham Center Shelter. So, based on that, there's really no public here to hear.
Liz make a brief presentation.
Liz, do you wanna make a very short presentation?
Well, since I was here last, was I here last?
No, a month ago.
We have, you know, proceeded with Mel and with the state. Basically, as I'm sure Mel knows better than all of us, that it's a very complex grant. And it's federal money and it goes to the state community development grant. And the only recipients are the municipalities. And the uses are usually housing or economic development in some cases. So, basically, a benefit training, we've done, set up to write the grant. One of the prerequisites that we warrant it, that we have done, that you have done. And we also have the brief description as well as the architect's drawings. Not much is really changing, except for some of the things on the first floor will be reconfigured. So, basically, just in a nutshell, the shelter has been in operation for 30 years this year. Formerly was a boarding house and during that time, we've been open pretty much 100%. People can come and they don't have to leave during the day. Instead, they work with case managers on permanent housing and working on employment. And, you know, we serve a range of people, families with children, people with disabilities, you name it. So, right now, after 30 years of pretty rough use, the shelter has quite a few rehab needs, including a new heating system, upgrades to plumbing and electrical. The shelter does not, at this point, have sprinklers. And we would like to reconfigure some of the downstairs. I don't know if, I know some of you have been in, but as you enter the shelter to the left, there's a small kitchen. It's the only public room that there is for people. The only other place people have to sit is on the porch or, you know, in their rooms. In some of the rooms, there's six people in the room, you know? So, we would like to kind of reconfigure it. You know, our manager's apartment is downstairs and that, we might possibly make a new efficiency or smaller apartment and then try to have some living space for the residents. So, basically, in addition to replacing the furnace of hot water, doing energy efficiency, insulating, upgrading the plumbing and heating, repairing the foundation, the roof and chimneys, replacing that south facing porch, which is almost falling off anyway, and reconfiguring. And probably also, the other thing we would like to do and which Preservation Trust has been after us to do is they would like us to re-side the building. 'Cause it looks a little dingy, you know? That siding's been on there. Tom Plum put it on, I don't know when. And it's kind of faded and it's not in great repair, so, you know, I wanna get some prices on that.
And you're gonna go clabbards with that one?
Well, I'd like to. I, we had one of these construction needs assessments done by Tom Dillon, who was a consultant in Heinsberg. And he, you know, you could do clabbards or there's also another kind of a clabbard that isn't, you know, that supposedly has a longer life.
Well, excuse me, you went from aluminum siding, but to me, vinyl siding, I know it's not in the class for the older buildings, but wouldn't that be easier to maintain and just as good?
Well, I don't think, I don't know if the whole research is in on that. One of the issues that we run into on this issue is that the building is a historic building in a historic district. I'm not making an argument one way or the other, and I have fought changing it for quite a long time because I wanted to put my money, any money that the shelter had, into feeding people and providing services, but...
It just seems that we're trying to help people out, but then we turn around, we gotta go into historical, so we gotta take money for that, which isn't really helping people out. I mean, vinyl siding, to me, is just as easy to maintain, definitely more easier than trying to keep the wood over the years.
Nobody will argue that point with you, Ziggy, but it's the historic preservation side of things that hold their ground and want to keep things the older style with the wood style.
I understand that, but there's a lot of houses down there that do have vinyl siding because people can't afford it and this is money.
Exactly. No, I'm not arguing.
No, I'm just saying, I'd like to have it on TV so somebody can understand that. It just doesn't, there's always gets this way.
Here, here at the table, we understand it's other people that just, we have one building that the state owns and we replaced it with some vinyl windows. We got chewed out for it because we didn't go through historic preservation, 'cause it's an older house, and they should've rebuilt the windows that were single pane glass that didn't have the R factor and all that stuff. So, we understand, I agree, and it's one of those things that, one of those battles, if, you need to take that to Montpelier if you're gonna, and try to win it there, 'cause...
All right, but I just wanna start it here someplace.
Well, it's not a bad comment and, you know, like I say, I'm just trying to get the consensus that I need to have a decent place for people and a place that meets people's needs and a place that is a little bit more uplifted, you know? One of the things we started doing a few years ago, just so that the city council knows, is we started working with the counseling service of Addison County. And we started contracting with them to come in once a week and meet with our individuals. And it was a really great thing for many of our families because a lot of them got involved with the counseling service, whether it was depression or mental illness or developmental disabilities or substance abuse. And they kind of entered through the gate and got a lot of services and a lot of help to become permanently housed and employed. One day, I came into the office and that counselor said, you know, "I wanna talk to you." Said, "You really should think about how this place is," you know? Because when people are suffering with mental illness, it's really rough if things aren't uplifted, you know what I mean? If things aren't in a decent... I mean, you know, we've tried to maintain the house, we've tried to do the repairs, the consultants said we've done a fairly good job with it, but it's not, you know, it's worn, the place is really worn. So, my whole goal in doing this is really to have an environment from which people can take the next step in their life. And, you know, it was kind of a wake-up call and he said that. You know, my attitude was, let's get, let's make sure we're sheltering as many people as we can and nobody's outside and, you know, we've got the case managers, we've got the resources. I never really gave that much thought about, you know, could it be nicer? Could there be quiet place for people to work on their resumes? You know? And so, I think we're really trying to take the service the next step. The other thing I have to notice is that in the city town plan, you know, it's one of your goals that we should do a good job maintaining public housing, you know? I think the plan says, you know, that the city would like to work with the nonprofit community to make sure, you know, and we're right on the main street, you know? So, I want it to look as good as it can for the residents and for the community and for it to be the kind of place where people can really, you know, move forward from.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions? Elizabeth? If not...
I'll make the motion, close the public hearing.
Motion's been made. And second, we close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abolled? So carry. Public meeting is closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get back to you once I know more about that.
It's just, you know, that looks just to me, some vinyl siding looking, look just as nice as wood and it's easy to maintain.
We've got it on our E Street apartment, I think it looks fantastic. But it does look a little rough, sheltered now, you know? You drive by and you look at it, it's, you know, a little dingy, so...
Sometimes they, as Mike was talking about, some of these programs, particularly federal programs, require what's called the SHPO sign-off, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. And when they say they have us follow the federal standards of the interior, whatever, and when I say interior, I'm not talking about the interior, it's a standard for historic structures, people's hands are tied, you know? You can't get the money without a SHPO sign-off and the SHPO won't sign off unless it meets the standard. It's just, it's a typical, you know, when there's a federal government funding, typically there's strings attached and that is a rope.
But there's also private entities that care about this and that would maybe throw in some money toward it, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, that's a possibility, you know? We've applied to a few of those. I don't wanna jinx it by going into great detail, but, you know, I feel like if it means something to somebody and they wanna step up and be a partner, then that's a positive thing. So, I guess, what about the minutes now?
Well, yeah, Joan will have the minutes done in a week.
Okay, great.
They'll be online or we can get those to you. And I think the deadline on the grant is in September. So, obviously, at some point, you and I and Lisa Ryan, I believe, need to get you registered as a writer so that you can...
Can you just call and do that or...
Well, Lisa does, Lisa will do it, but we just need to get together and get you designated as a, as a writer and, 'cause it's all done online, as you know.
I've got quite a bit written, not all, but some.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your interest. I just wanna also say that, you know, we bought some passes and the church bought some passes to the pool and people just love it. It's fantastic for people this, you know, this summer.
Good.
Really, you know, it kind of, people feel kind of part of the community. Kids loved it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andy's our only visitor and he's here as a columnist, so he's saying, give me the nothing to say sign. Okay, general business. Warrants around and sign?
Yeah. One thing on the, on the warrants, one of the things that we do, we, which I wanna try to actually make this a practice, 'cause the only way that we can really have good budget investment is to pay bills. I mean, maybe there's a way to encumber line items so that we can get a handle on it, but we actually like to pay our bills. So, when we put the warrants together for you in your agenda packets, that's basically all of the bills that we have kicking around as of noon or 1:00 on Friday. And so, bills come in on Monday, bills come in on Tuesday, and like this sheet right here that was put together for me are really additional bills that are in the, in the packets that are not on your sheet, all right? And let me just, I'll just quickly go down through them. The Green Mountain Power bills, we have to wait, we just wait until all of them are in because they all get processed at the same time and the last bill shows up on around the 14th to the 15th of the month. So, there's a Green Mountain Power, monthly Green Mountain Power check in there. Kenny Drug, we received a statement. Neptune Uniform, state chemical. Stitzland Page, which hopefully will be the last legal bill that we ever see related to the Velco, 'cause I'm, I'm settled on, on the final landscaping out there. U.S. Bank is, that small bill deals with our photocopier. The Virgin's Champ Swim Team, that swim team refund, the way that the swim team operation is set up is that anybody who is a member of the swim team, the swim team fee is $65 and that money is paid to the City of Virgin's. And so, we accumulate that money and over the course of the season, we collected $7,165 in registration fees. And the way that the arrangement is with the Virgin's Swim Team and more specifically Kim Palmer, is that all of the employees that are the coaches for the team, they are paid coaches and their salary, wages, social, employer's social security, workers' compensation is calculated to find out what that cost is for those three positions. And you run a calculation and the relationship that we have with the swim team is that if we don't have enough money in registrations, they have to pay us to cover the shortfall. If we receive too much money, then we pay them the difference and which goes back into their till, which they have a checking account, which is used for registration and meats, ribbons, T-shirts, things that are related to the, related to the team. So, there was, there's a check in there for $1,084.93, which is the difference between the coaches' wages and all of the related employer costs and the registrations. And related to that, one of the things that we require and we receive 100% is that anybody who is a member of the Virgin's Swim Team has to have a swim pass. That's the rule. And all 113 participants on that roster paid for a pass. And so, there's actually another revenue stream that that swim team provides. And I'll talk a little bit more about the pool later in the meeting, Mike.
Okay.
And then there's another check for the Vermont Department of Taxes, which I'm assuming is withholdings or something. We certainly wanna pay that. Actually, you know what? With the 231, it's actually software for our KAMA, it's our annual license for KAMA is the 23185.
Okay. I'd ask for approval of the Virgin City Council meeting for July 20th, 2010.
Make said motion.
Second.
Motion by Randy, seconded by Lowell. Corrections, missions or errors?
It just happened to be by, on the last page, council goals.
I caught something and I didn't mark it and I can't find it, yeah?
It just said Alden and Coleman will work more with surrounding towns to get them more, to get them more involved. It's the words move and involve. It says Alden and Coleman will work more with surrounding towns to get them moved involved.
Moved involved?
Oh, that's what it was. Moved. It was, it was supposed to be an R instead of a V.
More involved.
More involved. That's what it was.
This is the last page where it says council goals.
Place the error with, B with an R. We have a motion and a second. Any other mission, errors, corrections? Hearing done, all those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Abolled? So carry. All right, we're going to talk a little bit about review of budget.
Yeah, actually, Christine, you had a question in the warrants about the checks that went to Tristan Zagalag, I can't remember pronouncing names. And what it is, is at the last meeting, I reported about the tax sales that we had, the properties up in Thomas Circle, and we did have a bidder. Tristan was the high bidder, $75,000 on one and $55,000 on the other. City Bank paid a, gave us a check to cover all of the taxes, costs, advertising costs related to that. And therefore, we returned $75,750 to Tristan, which is $75,000 plus 1% of his bid. And that $750 was obviously paid by City Bank. The other check of $55,550, we received a check from the Bank of Vermont and that's the mortgage holder on the Saint-Julien property. And so, those, both of those properties were redeemed within the first 30 days and Tristan made 1% on his $130,000 investment. And related to the budget report, you'll actually see those same $131,000 numbers in here, non-budget income and non-budget expense, because they, they not only pay the bid, but pay for the, pay for any related cost. One of the things, right off quick on page one, and Joan, Joan is aware of this, but this is a very busy time for us. The top three lines, the first line on property tax, she will get that all corrected. What she needs to do is just make a journal entry to separate the state, the state payments and the school tax adjustment so that that line item becomes net of school. So, by the next meeting, that, that number will be something very near that $1,279,000. The other two line items Joan also knows need to be corrected. They, they should not be in the negative. She got some, I'm gonna call it misguidance from our software people as to how to handle the tax sale dollars as they were coming in. And it may very well have been a timing feature because it was, the day that we held the tax sale was basically a day after we did the property tax bills, all right? And there's a way that we handle old bills versus new bills. And I think that's how that got messed up there, Joan, but we'll get that journal, you know, with the journal entry, get it in the right spot so that there really is no 60-day and the interest in penalty does equal what we, what we bill. Otherwise, obviously, we're only at two months, you know, we're not even two months into the year, so it was too early to, to claim victory or, or defeat on anything, but, you know, things are, things are moving along fine.
I have a question, Mel, on the police department, the information technology.
Yeah.
That's high.
Yeah. Should be done, yeah. There's, well, it's not done, but we... The police department never had a server. They actually had a computer in there, like a regular PC that kind of acted like a server and really is not the way to run this whole system. And so, that was part of the upgrade. So, those were around $6,000 or $7,000 paid right out of the gate for information technology. So, it's not as though, and there are some monthly charges that are, that are related to information technology, but you won't, there's a one-shot bill, I think it was, it might've been, I'm not sure if it was this meeting or the last meeting, to fork communications, but that was a new, a new server.
So, that technology is something that puts us, puts the police department on...
Yeah, and you know, we really tried, I tell you, the computer, the server that, that we have at administration is, is absolutely large enough to, you know, from a capacity standpoint, to handle the police. The problem is, is just not allowed. It's not allowed because of the CAD system that they call it. It's not, it's not for design. It's about the criminal, whatever, system. They, we cannot share, you know, you'd think that you, their system would be on one drive and our system would be on another. They will not allow us to use the same server. So, unfortunately, you know, we end up having what I feel is, is, it's not redundancy, it's a doubling of, of our needs at City Hall, but that's just the way that it, the way that it is.
None of the, one of those laws, it doesn't make sense, but...
But it's, you won't see it again. You won't, it's one of those, you know, there's a lot of police purchases that are one-time, one-time items and that's, and that's one of them.
My last question was about the pool and if you'd want me to wait, I'd be happy to wait.
Yeah, I can talk about the pool. Why don't I talk about the pool? And one of the, obviously, the difficulties, I'll say for you, and I will certainly prepare you a, a nice report, hopefully, for the next meeting. I've talked about this before. The pool season crosses fiscal year, all right? And we collect most of the money before the end of the fiscal year and we spend most of the money after the fiscal year. And, you know, Joan and I actually both are anxious to see how we're doing. And so, what we end up doing is we run a revenue report on last fiscal year and a revenue report on this fiscal year and combine them and run an expense report on last fiscal year and expense report on this, and then combine them, all right? And I did that today. And if you, if you look at how the swimming pool is doing right now, the, over both of those periods in this season, the revenues are $7,295 above expenses, okay? And we're not done. I can tell you that on the collection side, Roland brings this money every day. I mean, I don't know how much money brought in this week, but...
It's in the seventies.
Yeah, so it's not a lot of money. We've, the pool, the last day of the pool is on Friday, all right?
Oh, I thought Saturday.
I think that, I think it's closed on Friday and the workers work on Saturday and just clean it all up and, and they're done, all right? So, we basically got four days more receipts, so you got a couple hundred bucks. So, basically, on the revenue side, we're done. On the expense side, obviously, we got a $1,000 electric bill that we will be getting next month. There may be some additional chemical bills, a little bit of labor. We got one more week of, of wages. So, there's not a lot of, a lot of expenses left. So, you know, clearly, we're in good shape in the pool, all right? That the rates that we set, policies that we put into place, you know, it's good, clearly gonna have a surplus. And remember that they turned over $1,986 before we got started and that's not counted in the, in the, in the 7,200. So, I think it's, you know, it's pretty good.
So, we're making money off of it?
You know, making money, you know, it's, it's...
Maintaining.
Yeah. That whole garden.
Yeah, no, yeah. You gotta look at both, you have to look at both, you have to look at both years, all right? So, you know, it, it obviously shows that when we set the rates, there was some increase in the rates. There was certainly the requirement that all swim team members get a pass. I can tell you that some of the, the organizations, American Legion Auxiliary paid for a number of kids, churches pay for kids, counseling service pays for kids. There's, there's, there's a lot of support out there from agencies and nonprofits that in essence make us whole, all right? So, it really does help. And, and I'm hoping, as in the past, that the Fishman family will continue to make an annual donation of $2,000. I'm gonna, I don't know that the Fishmans know that the city owns the pool now, but I'm gonna get ahold of an address of one of the daughters and let them know, let them know what's going on.
Does that still take into effect the $6,000 we give annually or does that not...
Well, we put that, that includes that $6,000. You know, I, I think, Lowell, that is something that we can, we can think about when we're, when we're doing next year's budget, you know, as to, you know, whether or not we need to allocate $6,000. One of the reasons why we have the rate differential where Virgin's residents, for a single person pass, as an example, pays $45. If you're not a Virgin's resident, you pay 60. One of the reasons for that is because there's $6,000 that the city watershed money goes in to subsidize that. I will tell you, next year, if everything stays the same and if we adopt the same rates that we put into place this year, it actually generates more money next year and that's because Walt Ham and Patton lose their one-time treatment as a Virgin's resident, all right? See, Walt Ham and Patton are paying the same rates as Virgin's this year and that's because they're absorbing that bond, that $10,000 bond. I don't know exactly what that is, whether or not it's $500 or $600, I don't really know, but, you know, that will, all things being the same, it actually results in a little bit more. So, like, the question it would be, is could we possibly not subsidize the swimming pool to the tune of $6,000 and set all rates of all towns the same? Something that, you know, is worthy of some, worthy of some discussion.
Being that we're new into this, I would like to, I would hope that we would create some sort of a rainy day fund with the age of some of the equipment down there, just so that if we do get a big hiccup somewhere over the years, we have a bucket of money to fall back to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it, it doesn't come in back and all of a sudden, we have to pull... So, you know, it, it doesn't come in back and all of a sudden we have to pull it out of somewhere we don't wanna have to pull it out of. So, I mean, you could earmark the six thousand with a stipulation that it wouldn't be used only if it had to be, but at least it will be pocketed there so that, so we'll get into that next year.
One thing, I, I don't know if Roland's wife watches TV meetings, but I, I think that Roland is gonna stay on. I think Roland really enjoys running the pool. And I really think that he is interested in staying on. I spoke to my sister-in-law, and the way that the work has, you know, you know, ninety percent of the work that Linda did for the pool landed on Joan's plate and Melissa's plate, or, you know, whatever, okay? So obviously, the, the new arrangement where we're dealing with all of the money on a daily basis, we're paying all of the bills when they need to be paid. Linda's workload is much less, alright? She still does handle scheduling, and so she's agreed to stay on with that as well. So this, this one-year transition may be a ten-year transition is, is our hope. So, you know, it really, I mean, it really works good. I mean, Roland is, he comes every day. He, he, you know, all of the money has been accounted for. The, what we call the day sheet is all balanced, it goes to Joan. All the money goes in the right buckets, so you have a very accurate accounting of, of the dollars. And, and, you know, Roland, you know, he, he really is a great employee and, and he has involved the Public Works crew. And that's one of the things that we wanted to do, was to get the Public Works involved, and he communicates with them. You know, he's already got, got them scheduled to pull the pump just as soon as the pool is closed. So it is, you know, rolling into, into a nesseable facility for, for sure.
Excellent.
Good.
And when we get to the goals, I'll talk briefly about some notes that I got emails back and forth, so, okay? Excellent. Anything else budget-related? If not, we won't talk about goals at this point. We'll talk about committee reports. Anything to report on the farmer's market, Chris? Okay. David's not here, he's in Maine, the lucky dog. Randy, anything to report?
No, sir. Other than we had another honored forest meeting.
Oh, yeah? And we have another one coming, we just gotta find a, have a, find a place to have it, 'cause this, this place is busy on the twenty-first of September. Ziggy, anything?
No. I didn't tell what I heard, but you were talking about the end and stuff, I...
Yep. Mr. Lowell, okay? Alright. We'll jump right in quickly to council goals. Anybody in particular wanna start?
Well, I'll start. I mean, I would love to say that I'm totally responsible for the success of the farmer's market, but I really have to hand it over to Rhonda. She has just done a great job getting vendors in there, and she has so much energy. And I, I see people, it's busier and busier every week, so...
It's gonna take that momentum.
Yeah.
It's gonna take that presence and, and develop, it is, it's, it's starting to, starting to grow. We, we went through Shover and, was it last Saturday or whatever, the week before? And when we did, they've expanded over by the, this school, because they've got that, it's big. So hopefully, we can grow.
So I think it's been a good, good first year with her energy.
Super. Alright. Mr. Randy?
I'm continuing with working with the honored forests and stuff like that, and spending more time with that, and trying to get, gonna try to get back to be, spend some more time with the seniors to get a feel for them. And the snow shoveling project is up and running, but Dale Nolan is no longer with Job Corps. There's another man has taken his place, and I have yet to be able to get a meeting with him, 'cause he's just getting into the position and getting going on the ground floor.
Maybe he'll strike up some conversation on Friday.
That's what I'm hoping.
Great. Sounds good. Ms. Ziggy?
Nothing's changed, it's just trying to get communicating with all the other towns. I do talk to them more and more to people in Fairsburg. See, I talk to Loretta sometimes and see what's going on, you know, with, with different things that they wanna do. And I, I did get a call concerning, which they're in Fairsburg, wanted to know that why they couldn't vote on this water thing. Virgens, I had to explain to them why they couldn't vote on it. And I said, "It's just, you know, Virgens-Panton." "Well, can we give our opinion?" And I said, "Well, yeah, you can." Then I thought you also could refer them to Virgens-Panton Water District also. Let them, you know, talk to them about it, 'cause I'm really not, I don't know everything about it. I'm just here with the...
Still Lowell?
I'd still like to work more with Joe and Dave on, on getting, utilizing the basin a little bit more in the dog's basin.
Did, anything ever happen with the survey? They talked about doing a survey?
We got it out, we, you know, Dave, Joe came up with it so soon, just before summer, but I don't know if it ever got out to anybody or not.
As far as I know, I haven't seen it.
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
I'm not aware that it is, is out in, in the marketplace.
So we'll definitely have to make sure we get that ready to roll out next year and utilize the basin a little bit more.
Right. We, we opted to invite the fishing derby organizers to be, join us for a meal in Louisville. One of the things that we should take and put on our agenda next time is appoint, reappoint them, so that we, if they want some momentum like they had last year, we can get, they can get going.
I'd be happy to make that motion right now.
I'll take that motion right now, that we reappoint those...
I agree with that motion, that we reappoint the fishing derby committee.
And I will second that.
I withdraw, but Lowell's...
Okay, Lowell, being on the committee, second it. Open for discussion?
You're happy with that, Lowell? You've been working with them in the...
I don't work with them very much. They do it all on their own, I just, I'm just there...
He's the liaison between the council and...
And I try not to step on any toes, just let them do their thing, and they work very well.
Alright.
Alright? No other discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Polls? So carried. Done with. Thank you. My goals, the only one that I've fallen short on is I haven't made or had the time to pull off a Cracker Barrel, and I'm still trying to do that. I have had some discussion as far as the economic development. I, I have had some discussion and planted a few seeds. We, we're in a transition period of Jackson finishing his term with the Opera House and Corcoran Girl.
Eileen.
Eileen, taking over. Sent a message to her yesterday that I have a couple ideas, a couple new events that I'd like to see happen. So it would help stimulate some stuff and bring some more people into the area. And again, it would take a little while to get going. One of the events, it's, would work better in the fall, but there'll be some more detail coming out surely about those things once I have a chance to. I'm trying to find an owner, owner to the, for the event versus trying to dump it on Marguerite in the, in the chamber. I'd like to keep it within the confines of, of the city, and, and if, if there's funds to be raised, put it into the Opera House pocket versus, you know, creating Marguerite more work. She's already in overload and, and actually needs volunteers to help, so... I, Mel did get a call from David, and David feels that he is on track with the skate park. I think that's safe in saying. I did get a phone call this evening. One of the police officers, very concerned about the park not being open very often. I have, I need to contact David again. He's not responding to my emails or my requests for a schedule that I can post on the website, so I, I don't know what else, how to best approach that. But I, I need to get some, some response, so we can figure out. Because right now, it's, it's not being used, and there's a lot of people that wanna use it, from what I was told tonight. From the other side of the table, Joe. Him and I were emailing back and forth. One of the things that he said is he hopes to wrap up sometime in September, the finalization of the, the swimming pool. He figures that's pretty much on track. We've pretty much uncovered, the committee and, and all the members that are working with that have under, under, you know, uncovered any little surprises or flaws that were had, so they can only tweak, tweak what's in place a little bit and just, hopefully, it'll go... It went smooth this year, it'll go a little bit smoother next year, so... So that's kind of it on the goals. I know that Joan, you had a, you were, you're, you're working on one of your goals and...
I actually have a bid, it's like fifty-six-hundred dollars to do my books, my land records from about book twenty-two to book seventy. And I meet with him tomorrow to find who, just exactly what's involved in it.
What have we got for money set aside to do any of that?
Uh, I have almost ten thousand dollars set aside in that fund.
Does that have to go in for the council for approval, or is that something you can go ahead and act upon your...
I will bring it to the board before I just jump into it. Plus, I also wanna go to a couple of towns to see how they have theirs done compared to Icon's, done a lot of them in our area and in New Hampshire, so I can go to towns that have his system compared to other towns that have a different system, so I can compare what's, what's gonna work better. I do ask attorneys that come in, have they been exposed to the digitalized records in other towns? And they haven't. So I, I'm, it's more Chipping County that's jumped on, South Roland, Pitts, Essex, the real big town, but the smaller towns, we're all ready to move. We just wanna make sure when we take the step, we're going in the right direction.
Well, we don't have a telephone company that we're in trouble with, and so we don't owe a lot of money that are respec, so maybe...
Might as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, I'm getting there.
Yep.
I don't have a new set of goals, Mike.
I still have yours.
Yeah. One of the things that was in my goals dealt with the personnel policy, and Joan and I, it is not at all that I, I forgot about that. Joan and I continue to find little areas that we wanna fix. And I don't wanna guarantee you that we'll have something in front of you by the end of the year, but I, I think that we probably have uncovered about everything, Joan. The little, you know, inconsistencies or areas that need to be clarified. There's areas in the personnel policy that are silent. And that's obviously not good, because everything becomes subject to my interpretation and, and I think it's better things aren't silent. It's crystal clear to the employee, so it's not like we have tons of things. But there are, there, we have uncovered lots of things that, as Joan said, are either silent or just needs some clarity. And I, I just think it's important that, again, the personnel policy is, is clear. The other project that I, that I still wanna do, but I just haven't found time to do, and that's to gather information from light towns. Waterbury, Newport City, you know, full-service communities like us, to gather... Fairhaven, I think, would be a good, a good comparison committee, to gather budgetary information, to see, you know, where other towns spend their money from a percentage-wise. And so I, I have not lost track of those, those two projects. The, the problem is, as you all know, you know, I come to work with wanting to do these ten things, and I end up, you know, the public controls my, my schedule, and so I don't get to those ten. So it's really difficult to, to find quiet time to do projects like that. But I, I fully intend to do them when, when, you know, when time, time is available. But I have too many, it's not like I run around with emergencies. I just have a lot of projects that are, that are in the works that need my attention. I just don't have time to, you know, take a break, take a day off and only work on, on a project that absolutely doesn't have to be done today. That's what I, that's how I end up feeling.
Speaking of, did you get your article done?
I did not get my article done, Mike, but, but I have my topic, and I'm gonna say that I will have that to Judy by ten o'clock tomorrow morning. How's that for deadline?
Mike, is there space to put in there to mention about cleaning up after your dogs and stuff like that, our normal maintenance things?
Unless Mel wants to put it, 'cause we, I, I tell you, I, I was overly wordy this time, and...
Not much space left.
No.
It's, it's, I think it's an important thing, because we got, there's that and people taking care of their green space in front of their houses.
Yeah, you know, Randy, I actually, I, I actually thought of something related to that, dealing with the, the, I, I think lots of people who own shrubbery that runs along the sidewalk don't understand that, that...
So I wanted to talk to you, Mel.
That's really not the city's responsibility. I mean, if you plant a hedge along the city sidewalk, you should be maintaining your hedge. So, you know, I think, you know, those kinds of things, we have a lot of... Some things are ordinances and some things aren't ordinance, and some things are just common sense items. And I think that'd be a good, that'd be a good subject matter. Kind of reminder or expectations or whatever, you know, of what was expected for people.
You walk down Victory, and you have to duck and dodge a few branches to...
Oh, yeah.
And you said, "There's just a few spots like that." But there's, there's several spots throughout the city that, just letting loose with my pulse, I'll take care of it all. You just have to clean up the mess.
Well, I mean, we do some. I mean, recently, I got a complaint about McDonough Drive. I mean, people, you know, were...
Coming out, coming here.
Yeah. No, no, from High Street down, there's an area there that grows that into the sidewalk, you know, and people have to walk in the road to get to the community garden, you know? And so, you know, I get an email and I send the crew up. And there's certainly, certain areas of the town that probably the Public Works crew has to do. But there's other areas in the town, if somebody has a hedge on Main Street, you know, they should trim their hedge. You know, they're the ones that wanted the hedge. They should be trimming it so that the public has full use of the four-foot sidewalk, you know? So, and, and like I say, I don't know that we have an ordinance, and I don't know that you should, you should have to have an ordinance. I mean, it's just, you know, you know, common sense that you need to trim your shrub so that people can use the public sidewalk.
Point well taken. I, I will see if I can squeeze a few, very few more words in at the very end of my article.
Mel seems like he's gonna have a whole conversation about that.
If I shifted gears from the other one, yeah, I could probably do that. It's probably a better, you know, I probably could shift gears.
At the time, I don't know if the other...
You did mention about the dogs too, right?
Yes. I'm really, I'm pleased, not happy with it.
I'm out at least twice a week now with a shovel up to my parking lot, and I'm out there and I'm just picking up stuff.
And, and Falls Park is seeing, I don't know what's being left down there, but I know that it's seeing an extreme activity of dogs down there. A lot of people will go down and walk, I mean, that's very good, very, very good. And I think most of them pick, pick up after their animals, but, you know...
Yeah, I, I think, Randy, I can actually shift gears pretty easily, and I can totally shift what I plan on writing before ten o'clock and have it being more of a, more of an information article about reminders.
I, I don't, I don't think the residents actually really know what they're supposed to, you know, they didn't know that they had to maintain their, you know, the green space in front of their house, then sweeping the sidewalks and stuff like that. You know, keep general upkeep of that stuff and trimming hedges that overrun. And I think it'd be great that they have, you know...
It is, it is an ordinance that they own the, to remove the snow on their sidewalk in front of their house. There is an ordinance that does, so we, we do send the sidewalk out, so, but... That's why Chris doesn't have a sidewalk over in front of her house.
That's right. That's why I have a father that has one, and my have one.
Okay, well, it's part of our, our exercise program come winter, we're gonna need it. Okay, one of the things that I would like to do, though, I was just thinking about it in the conversation, is we have a nice meeting with the, all the city employees, if we could come up with some subject matters. If we could come up with some subject matters, uh, that would be relative, relevant and could take a, uh, an hour or hour and a half or something, uh, could do that again. I could, I could spring for some hot dogs and hamburgers and that went, went well last time, so...
Yeah, we'll lose that.
Yep, something that's, they were scared hell out of because they thought somebody was getting a pig slut. Well, oh, well, all right, uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, see where we were, goals, there we, public comment, we, uh, we'll have to go to old business. Uh, appointment of Plan, Planning Commission, Mel?
Uh, just a couple of things. You know, Alex, uh, the new chair of the Planning Commission, Alexandra McGuire, uh, put a, I think she called it a letter, a letter to the editor, and it really wasn't that. It was basically, uh, you know, we're, we're seeking one more member on the Planning Commission. That came out. And, uh, you know what's funny, people, uh, for whatever reason, and we do have some good, obviously, good people on the Planning Commission, but some people are very intimidated by that position, by those positions, DRB positions, Planning Commission, uh, uh, positions. And so it's not like we have a long list of folks that, that are eagerly wanting to sit on that board. Last night at the Planning Commission, uh, it was on their agenda as well and it was called new member recruitment. And, uh, the group did come up with a list of three names that, uh, that I'm going to speak to. The other, the other option is, is there was a time when, uh, when we actually had four members who were both Development Review Board members and Planning Commission members. And then you had three members who only sat on the DRB or only sat on the Planning Commission. And I think that, uh, you know, it was done that way on purpose, uh, you know, because to make sure that you had, um, um, people with a lot of background, not background, history. And so that was really important. But it was also felt that that might be temporary in that over time, the boards really would, you know, I don't wanna say completely separate, but potentially completely separate. There actually is a feeling that there should be some connection. Not necessarily, it doesn't have to be four, it doesn't have to be a specific number. But if, if we can't seem to find, you know, one of the three people that we came up with the other night, that will be an agenda item on the Development Review Board meeting to see if there's anybody other than Jason Farrell. Jason serves on both boards. And if you remember, Mark Hatler served on both bar boards, Neil Curtis served on both boards. And there was a time when Mike Furlands served on both boards. And at one point, he gave up the Planning Commission side. So obviously, it hasn't been uncommon to have people sitting on both boards, so... I'm hoping that, you know, uh, before your next meeting, we will, uh, have interviewed another person and get a recommendation, uh, to you. But if there's anybody that you can think of, uh, that you'd want me to approach or if you wanna approach yourself, please do. And we'd, uh, I'll get them before, uh, Dave and myself and the, the other two chairs for an interview and wanna fill that, uh, fill that last seat.
Yeah, would be great. Item B on the old business, Claude and Sandra Bourgeois, waste water connection fee.
Sorry about all the, the numbers. There's a lot of numbers on this piece of paper. It's one of those things that if you cross your eyes, there's a reindeer, uh, suddenly appears in the, in the middle of the page. Anyway, at the last meeting, uh, David Austin spoke about, you know, we should have some kind of equation, you know, something about the present value of, of prior payments. And so, uh, what I did, uh, in this report, uh, and obviously David's not here to talk about it, but I actually, by using the internet, was able to establish what the present value of these old payments are. And that's what you see, that column there, present value. The other thing that I was able to do was to backtrack on the nine developed properties that are not hooked up to the sewer system to see how much money they have paid in bonded debt since the time of their ownership, all right? So this is, you know, obviously, all of these properties, there was bonded debt payments going back on all of them to, to nineteen sixty-four. But the way that I put this chart together is I, uh, started it at the time that a person acquired their property. If you take Pat, Patricia Emerson, she and John bought that property in nineteen ninety-four. And obviously, the Kirbys before them paid bonded debt for years and years. But I started the chart at the time that, that, uh, the current person acquired the property. One of the things, and David's not here to get into, uh, a mathematical argument with me, but I certainly do understand his feeling that ten dollars in nineteen sixty-four is worth seventy dollars and, and, uh, and thirty-eight cents in two thousand and ten. However, you, you need to think about what happened to the money. In nineteen sixty-four, the city of Virgin was in debt. And if you were not hooked up to the sewer system, you paid ten dollars bonded debt. If you were hooked up to the sewer system, you paid thirty-two. So the ten dollars that someone like, uh, Vermont Railway paid, all right? We took their money and we used it. We used it to pay the debt. We didn't take the money and put it into a bank for some future day when they were gonna tap on. We used the money. So I think the, I understand the, the concept of using the, the present value of a, of an old payment. In this instance, we didn't put it in the bank. We used it, uh, to ba, to pay, uh, to pay bond payments. To me, what really happened here, uh, and, uh, is when the city shifted from a five-dollar connection fee to a five-hundred-dollar connection fee, I don't think that it was brought to the city council's attention of what do we do with those people that have been paying this bonded debt charge for a number of years? I don't think it ever entered anybody's mind and it should've been discussed at that time. And I know that it's tough to say, okay, what would, what would we have done in nineteen ninety-nine had we thought about this? What would we have done with those eleven property owners that have been paying this bonded debt now that that fee is going from five dollars to five hundred dollars? And then in two thousand and six, when it went from five hundred dollars to thirteen hundred and forty, that point didn't get brought up again, uh, about do we have some obligation to these folks that paid bonded debt, uh, over all of the years? It just was not, uh, it was not something that was discussed. So, you know, my, my feeling continues to be that, that even though we didn't take these pe, the, the money that people were putting, uh, that were giving to us, we didn't put it into a pot. I just feel that because they are unlike somebody who owns an undeveloped piece of property. An undeveloped piece of property paid nothing to the sewer fund. They have not invested any money into the sewer fund. And therefore, there should be some differential between a property owner who paid nothing into the sewer fund compared to a property owner that did pay something into the sewer fund. There should be some kind of an offset. What is the offset? It's, it's a tough one. It's a, it's a tough one to, uh, to call. So, and I, I, you know, it isn't, it isn't a real table pounder for me, for me, for me, Mike. I, uh, I think we need to be, you know, we need to be fair to all of these people, you know, but we don't need to, uh, we don't need to over-reward them, you know? They did pay us some money, we used it to pay the bonded debt. What's the fair number, if we are going to provide some kind of a credit, you know, what's fair? What, what is it? I don't know what it is.
Randy?
I would say, uh, we'll just take Burgoye, we'll take Bourgeois's. For example, they paid in over the life, seven hundred and sixty-five, forty. We should take that off the connection fee and come up with a connection fee of five seventy-four, sixty, if my math's correct.
Sounds right.
Ziggy?
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
First of all, um, Mel, I bought my property in nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah, and, uh, yes, you did. And there was a, there was, when you bought the property, there was a land lease to Al Bruce. And you bought out Al Bruce, uh...
But I also was paying on my house too. I mean, we were all, I wasn't on city sewer then.
Right, uh, right. And I, I'll, I'll have to look at the note that I have, but what it is, is...
Cause I paid for two units back then.
What this is about is about the trailer lot. This is not about your house. Your house is connected, all right? So this is not about your house, this is about the trailer lot.
Right, but, uh, I just...
And in nineteen eighty-one is when you bought out, uh, Al Bruce's, uh, lease. That's the date that you bought it out. You bought the property, you bought the property in nineteen seventy-one or two, or whatever it was. But you didn't buy out Al, Al Bruce's lease until nineteen eighty-one.
Right, but we...
And therefore, Al Bruce...
Did Al pay the...
Al paid the bonded debt until you bought him out in nineteen eighty-one.
Okay, but I still paid on, I mean, we weren't on city sewer. I'm talking about, we were, on nineteen seventy-two, we weren't on city sewer.
Your house, your house, if you're not, you're switching gears to your house? We didn't charge you five hundred dollars to tie in, we charged you nothing.
I know, but this was nineteen seventy-two, I was still paying sewer on it. I paid sewer, I mean, I paid the bonded on my house in seventy.
And what I'm saying is, is that when you tied into the system in, let's say, nineteen eighty-four, we either charged you five dollars or nothing. So the point I'm getting at is that we didn't charge you five hundred dollars in nineteen eighty-four and not give you a credit. We tied you in without you having to pay a connection fee.
That's right, that's because I allowed you to put, I mean, two manholes on my property.
Right.
We had that agreement.
Right.
Okay, right?
Yep.
All right. But what, it's still, I don't know, I just, we, I don't understand. If, if you bought a house, everybody else bought a house a certain time, and I bought my house in seventy-two, why, and I, and I paid just like the rest, why am I not, and it starts at nineteen eighty? I purchased my house in seventy-two. Cause you said this started when the house was purchased, right?
What it is, yeah. This is all about the trail.
Okay, so where is my house?
It's not on here because you're tied in. You're, you, you are not on this chart.
Oh, all right, all right.
Because you're, you're actually not on here, no different than, uh, Virgin's Discount Foods is not on here.
Okay, now I get it.
Any of the properties that, that tied in and transferred are history.
Okay.
So this is only about, is only about the trailer lot.
All right.
We have Randy's recommendation. So...
Yeah, I mean, Randy's, I mean, Randy's...
Are you looking to make a motion to...
Yeah, make a motion.
Pass, pass, across the board?
Yes.
But based on, we gotta, we gotta tie this together here. Only, only when they, when they tie that particular facility in?
Yes.
But well, yeah, in essence, what would happen is that this spreadsheet will need to continue to be updated until such time as all of them are connected. And obviously, you know, once somebody gets to thirteen hundred and forty dollars, they stop paying.
Yeah.
They would stop paying.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll have to be breaking refunds.
No, well, yeah, but...
They don't wanna do it.
No, we don't wanna do that. But the other thing is, is this is a way that is, is fair. They've been paying this bonded debt.
Would you give Pat back one hundred and twenty-four, forty?
I think we owe Pat back her one twenty-four, forty, I do.
You make the motion, I'll second it.
I make the motion. How do we wanna word this, so that it comes out, so it sounds perfectly right? I make the motion that we allow the, a credit be paid.
Be applied.
Applied to the thirteen hundred and forty-dollar connection fee for the number of years...
And future bond payment.
And future bond payments.
For those, when they connect.
Credit equal to the...
Bond debt charge.
Bond debt charge.
Right. Up, up to thirteen forty.
Up to thirteen forty.
You got some wording there that sound like making sense, Joan?
Yeah, sure, I know what the intent is, yeah.
Well, can I just ask, if you say thirteen forty, that means it applies forever?
Towards the tap-on.
Towards the connection fee.
Don't put a dollar now.
Right, right.
Towards, towards the connection, right.
Yeah, so the sewer connection fee could go up if we so choose.
I will, I, I will tell you, and, and you all had this conversation back in, uh, two thousand and six when you revised the rates, you had a, you, you hired a, a, an engineer was hired to do a rate review structure. And they ended up, um, concluding that your rates needed to be three hundred and fifty dollars. And they also concluded that the bonded debt charge needed to be eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, all right? The city council said, we cannot charge, we're not, we ain't buying that. We're not gonna charge eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents for some, we're not gonna charge somebody eighty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents when they're not hooked up to the system, okay? We're gonna charge them, you know, we'll keep it at this nine dollars and sixty cents. You know, in theory, had the bonded debt been charged, if it was charged correctly, then, and if people were made to pay this, uh, that bonded debt, then they would've accumulated quicker up to that thirteen forty. Obviously, you're out, you know, you're, you're paying, uh, feeling as if you don't get something, but you do get it at the ti, at the time of connection. But anyway, I don't, I don't, it's not a big deal to me. It's not a, it's not a big money thing.
So we have an understanding that if at some point in time, the connection fee goes up, then they're, we're going to start billing those people at a prorated amount?
What would hap, yeah.
To, and, and then go up to that? Say it goes up to fifteen hundred dollars, connection fee.
Then their, then their connection net of payments is gonna be whatever it is. If it's, if it's thirteen forty minus a thousand, they pay three forty. If it's fifteen hundred minus eleven hundred, it's whatever.
Here's a case for, here's a case we use Wagner, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, he bills up to the thirteen forty, he stops. All of a sudden, the rate goes up to fifteen hundred. We, are you gonna take him building, bill him the difference, a one-shot deal? Or are you going to prorate it so that he pays ten dollars a year until he gets up to that rate? In case he never decides to hook up to the...
Well, he just continues to pay the bonded debt, whatever that is.
Now, can he...
Let me just tell, let me just tell you, Mike, it'll, it'll be fifty years to get there.
And we won't be here, right?
No, it's, I'm, I'm not worried about Wagner. It's, it's ten dollars a year, uh, it's ten dollars a year, times fifty years is five hundred bucks. I'm, I'm not worried about anybody hitting thirteen forty.
Okay.
I'm not worried about it.
May I ask a question? Can John hook on now if he wants to? Does he have an option to hook on to sewer if he wanted to?
Uh, I think that John probably could hook on to Prospect Street, yeah, by gravity.
By gravity?
I think he could.
And all these other people, most of them, do they have access right now? I mean, see, a lot of this, we got in the mess as we are is because we did not have access to sewer. You know, I mean, so we paid the bonded and someday hoping that the sewer would be down there and up, up passes the Nuddles. Now, it, didn't the city take care of her when she had a problem with her septic tank? Didn't she, they put one in for her?
Noodle?
I mean, Turpin, I'm sorry, Turpin.
Turpin, it's my understanding that Turpin, according to Sheila, the city bought her, her tank. That's my understanding.
At the time she built her house.
That's right, that's my understanding.
So they felt, they felt responsible, that because she didn't have sewer, it seems like the city felt they were responsible for that sewer.
That part, apparently.
Yeah?
That's my understanding.
So they, they would behoove these people to connect?
If they can.
If they can.
If they can, what are you gonna do?
Well, well, we don't, I mean, the way their ordinance reads, you know, if, if a sewer line is available within X amount of feet they're required to tie on, you know, I don't know if John Wagner, uh, you know, falls into that. But if somebody had, if somebody has a onsite sys, system that's working and it's not, and it's not polluting, it's fine. It's no, no harm, no foul, really.
So we gotta...
I'm not gonna try to repeat that motion, but we have...
I got it.
Okay.
Would you like to read it back to us, please?
Well, I'll give you the gist of that.
Okay, that's rare, so I could swear to it?
Randy moved to the deduct the full amount of bonded debt payment and any future bond payments to be used towards a credit to the sewer tap-on fee in the amount paid up until the time of the tap-on and the credit not to exceed the tap-on charge.
God, she's good. Yep, I make said motion.
The motion is second. Further discussion? Not hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And should we make a motion for the...
Ziggy, are you voting or not?
I'm voting, but I'm not voting aye.
Okay, all those in favor?
I oppose.
Okay.
Or abstaining?
No, opposed.
Opposed, exactly. Um, and then do you feel like, can we just have an understanding that we're gonna reimburse Emerson? Or should we have motions to that effect? Pat Emerson, one hundred and twenty-four, forty. Pat Emerson, one hundred and twenty-four forty.
Well, that motion, that motion died because we don't have a majority.
Oh, yeah, I heard.
What was the vote? The vote was three. I didn't, I didn't vote, but if I, I usually vote in the favor of a tie, when it's a tie. If I had a voting privilege, I would vote in favor of, so.
You do have a voting privilege, Mike?
I'll vote in favor. So, it's passed.
Okay, so now back to Pat Emerson.
Yeah, basically, we need a motion to authorize a credit of a hun- it's, we don't tell people's checks, we just don't do it that way.
I have motion, Randy wants to make a motion.
It's a credit of one twenty-four forty on our-
Credit, and Chris wants the second tie. Open for discussion.
Did she pay the thirteen hundred or the five hundred?
Thirteen forty.
Fourty.
Definitely, money back.
Any other comments?
Yeah, she connected, she's a, she connected, uh, I know she, I'm sure she connected thirteen forty, alright? Well, actually, if she paid five hun- if she paid five hundred or thirteen forty, it's still, she's still entitled one twenty-four forty.
Cause she paid that.
But she did pay thirteen forty.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
We can actually take that off the list.
Okay, Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, uh, just a couple things related to this. One is the, uh, the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors, they have met at least a couple of times. Uh, and I think it's because they want, they didn't wanna be premature to meet with our committee. And the committee is, is you, me, and David. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for August twenty-fourth to meet with their, with their board. We don't have a time yet, but, uh, but that is, uh, planned for, for next week. Uh, one of the things that, uh, and I've talked to Mike about this, and I have not, I don't have a quote information, nor where I would get the money to be able to do this, but I really feel that before we can have, we can have any, we meaning the city council, can have any, uh, good conversation, uh, about, about this property is we need a topographical survey of the property. Uh, I think, yes, we own eight point one-three acres, but we really don't know what we own. We don't know if we have an acre of developable land, or five acres of developable land. And so, to do that, we need to have a, uh, topographical survey. The other thing that that would be useful for is I took the property and I, uh, using the old-fashioned cut and paste with tape and glue, superimposed this piece of property over our sewer maps, cause I wanted to find out how this property, uh, how this property sat in relation to gravity lines. I mean, obviously, the property can be developed with a, with a pump station and pump sewer up to, uh, up to Nehaven Road. However, I think that it can be hooked up to the property, uh, if it had an easement over the elementary school, union elementary school property, I think that it can tie in by gravity. And I wanna investigate whether or not that is true or not. So, I'm not sure where the money would come from. Uh, I'm gonna say that to have a topographical survey of this property is probably between a thousand and two thousand dollars. I'm winging it a little bit, I don't, I don't know exactly what that would cost. And I'm not sure really, uh, which fund we would use, uh, to, uh, to fund that. I, I think, uh, certainly, a portion of the property will always be used for recreation. There is a trail that runs through there, uh, it is an area, if some of it gets developed, that's true, but, uh, some of it will not get developed and will be used for recreation. So, I don't think that it's a stretch to use some watershed earnings to at least investigate the, uh, developability of the property. So, uh, if the, if the board would be willing to authorize me to proceed to get topographical, a topographical survey using watershed money, I will do that as quickly as I possibly can.
As for motion?
I make motion.
Second.
This side of the table's got it, I don't know which one. Randy made the motion, Ziggy seconded it. Open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, you have the approval there, Mel?
Okay.
City managers report.
I'm gonna go real quickly here, I've spoke about the pool, I've spoke about, uh, tax sales, and just a little bit more discussion on tax sales. Uh, I actually do have a number of other properties I'm gonna have to proceed with. Uh, there's probably eight or nine properties that still have sewer bills that go back to two thousand and seven, uh, that we've just got to, uh, uh, move forward on. Uh, there's not a lot of, of property tax people that are in, that are in, uh, serious trouble, and that's because we cleaned them all up, except for just a real small handful, you know, there's virtually none owed for two thousand and eight, they're all two thousand and nine, and so, we're working on, on payment plans on that, but I do wanna dig ourselves out of the hole on sewer. Uh, relative to the Streetscape project, uh, in front of Addison Outfitters, I received our construction permit, uh, from the state last week, so that'll allow us to bid that out. Uh, I'm planning to have a, a pre-bid, uh, site visit on the first of September. Have that scheduled with Norm LeBeff at either nine or ten o'clock in the morning, and I need to get an add down to, uh, the DAS Independent, so that it's just an opportunity for folks to come and understand the project, and pick up a set of plans, and then, uh, bid that out. You know, whether or not we can pull this off for, for a fall project, I don't know, but, uh, we're gonna proceed as, as fast as we can. Uh, relative to the planning grant, you know, we received a fifteen thousand dollar planning grant last night. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed, uh, responses to a request for proposal that, uh, that had been issued, and they, uh, we did get two, um, firms that submitted proposals. Addison County Regional Planning was one, and Land Works was the other, and the, uh, Planning Commission unanimously went to, uh, continue with Land Works, uh, as our consultant in that regard, so I'll be negotiating a contract. Both, both, uh, proposals were below the fifteen thousand dollars, so it's not as though there's any, any money that's, uh, required beyond the fifteen thousand dollar grant. Uh, last item I wanna talk about is, uh, paving. Uh, I bid out, uh, what I felt would be, uh, a major portion of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you all allocated, and, uh, we ended up with three companies that bid on that, uh, DuPois and Fisk, uh, bid, and the projects are all of Comfort Hill, and that means all of Comfort Hill, from McDonough Drive to the Town Line, all of High Street, and two portions of McDonough Drive, one is the upper part, which is where we never finished. You know, there was a drainage project up there, there's a section in there that needs to be done. And then there's two tenths of a mile after Job Corps, that if you've been out there, it's just absolutely terrible. You know, if you want, if you, if you have a desire to have a realignment, just drive out and down that road, and that's what you'll need when you, maybe your teeth, to be honest with you, it's really in, uh, in rough, uh, shape. So, the, uh, the three bids that I received, eighty dollars from DuPois and Fisk, uh, SD Ireland, I was able to get a bid from SD Ireland. Uh, the problem is, is SD Ireland, they do have a paving division, and, uh, the problem is, is that to do a job down in Addison County, they have to buy their pavement from either DuPois and Fisk or Pike, and felt that they couldn't compete, but I got them to bid just the same, and their bid came in at sixty-eight dollars and some change, something like that. And Pike's bid came in at sixty-five dollars and, uh, and change. So, uh, those projects that I just, uh, ran off will, will be somewhere in the vicinity of ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, alright? So, it'll be a pretty, pretty, you know, serious net in the one fifty, but we have to be careful not to spend it all, because there's related cost to paving, you know? Culverts, crushstone that goes on the side of the road, uh, and also, we always, uh, button up, uh, before winter, uh, you know, some areas. I also will be doing all of north, I'll call it North Maple Street from Battery Street, and, um, I end up having to make a judgment call. Certainly, certainly fifty percent of that overlay should be charged to the sewer project. I mean, we ran a sewer line down the middle of the road, you know, whether or not it's fair to charge the entire, uh, top coat to sewer, I'll, uh, I'll have to make a decision on that. But, uh, uh, we purposely only patched the trench last year when we did that project, let it settle, and then we come back, uh, this year and put a, put an overlay. So, all of the projects are in that area. I wanted to do Ice House Court, and I can't afford to do it, uh, uh, with the budget we got, so that'll, that'll end up having to be deferred another, deferred another year. But I'm, I am very, uh, I'm real happy with the bid, to be honest with you. Uh, uh, I know that around, surrounding towns, you know, get, you know, bids in the sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five range, and, and typically, we don't come close to that, because we have driveways and catch basins and, uh, sewer manholes to work around, which obviously inflates the cost to some degree. So, we came very, very close, uh, Pike's bid came very, very close to what surrounding towns, uh, are being charged on a, on a per ton basis. So, we're gonna schedule it through the Public Works Department, I don't know what the, I don't know what the date is, uh, but certainly, we'll get that done, uh, you know, certainly by, by, uh, by fall. Could talk a little bit about train, trains, train station. Uh, got an email from Wayne Davis today, uh, they have decided not to, uh, apply for three hundred thousand dollars from the enhancement fund, and, uh, he's saying that they're, they plan to seek their, uh, some additional money in other sources. It appears by his email, he's got about all of the, uh, agreements, and lease, and temporary easements, and perm, act two fifty amendments, he, appears that he has all of that in place now, uh, and I'm just hoping we can get this thing out to bid. I, I continue to fear, uh, you know, that, uh, this is not a winter project. It's, uh, I suppose you could, you know, you might be able to move in January, but you, you certainly, you know, can't do much work in, in January. So, you know, I'm, uh, I'm still just, you know, hoping that, you know, we can get this thing moved before snow flies. I know you've heard that before, at least two other times, if not three. This year. So, anyway, that's it, Mike, for me.
I'm gonna say, it's probably like, this history is gonna be made on the twenty-seventh of August. Uh, we're gonna have viewing of two moons. It won't happen again until the year two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. Uh, it starts in the evening, what is happening is the regular moon is coming up, and then Mars is coming up. It's, uh, Mars is really close to the earth on this particular pass, it's a very rare, rare thing, so. Make history, well, when the train station goes, I'll, I'll be like the two moons, it'll really be history. Um, did you get my message early this morning, uh, about taking that lift off, uh, off the street for?
I did, I have that right there, Michael, I do.
Yes, please.
I think I have all five of them.
If he's gonna be there much longer, actually, I'd like to see him find another parking spot, other than on city streets on the weekend. You know, it's, I can see working during the weeks, but it just sets around, take up space. Um, you know, we're being friendly. And I, I actually would like to see him take a hint, and while they're working in the falls, I would think maybe if he wanna do some repair to the back of his building and/or paint it, here's an opportune time with the dry land to stand on, reach up with a brush or a roller, put a fresh coat of paint on the backside of that, might, might do the building some good, so.
Which building is that?
The one that sits on-
The barn.
The barn.
Oh.
Okay, so, there's some opportunities there, instead of, uh, well, we won't go there, shut up. Um, okay, thanks, Mel. Uh, gonna go right on to, uh, item number nine, license agreements, outside seating. Uh, two thousand and ten license agreement, outside seating between the City of Virgin's and, uh, Julia, Juliana Jones Living LLC, it's the Virgin's Laundromat. Um, can I have a motion to approve this?
I will make said motion.
And can I have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, open it up for discussion now. Has anybody viewed where?
It's not very big.
I know, and that, but that's, that's the only footprint they got.
But just how big is that spot?
Um-
Three feet. I think it's probably eight by eight, something like that.
Little less than that.
It's one table.
That's all he wants.
Boy, they're gonna be two tables for two, then.
It's, it's, it is, it's gonna be, uh, for two, small tables.
Unless they jump over the tables and go into the building.
It's, it's adjacent to, uh-
Black sheet.
Black sheet.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, there's, there's a rope in between.
Torah, all of the floors.
Yep, and that's not a bad thing, because if you look on Main Street, there's some stuff that needs attention, and it's not getting it, so.
Yeah, that, the crosswalk right there, by the basin block, that's-
Put the bricks in, and it, and does look nice, I, I checked it out a couple times, and it is, it's gonna be tight, but, um, they're not serving alcohol, I don't believe.
Nope.
It's strictly- So, motion in a second, open it up for discussion.
Well, I think she should have the same rights that everybody else has there, just-
Yep.
See, I'll try it, see if it works, if it doesn't, then we'll have to fix it, change it. Any other discussion? If not, uh, let's move to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, Joan just handed me another one, for an outside consumption permit, uh, American Legion, uh, did it-
Make said motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion in a second, Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and ten, nine AM to nine PM. Has to do with the Rotary. Where's the site?
The, the location is gonna be at the Legion. The Rotary Club is the one who's gonna put the function on. Um, it's when you go into the Legion, they have that big parking lot, uh, to the left, before you go up to the upper tier.
Yep.
So, it's like from the Little League field, all that field, it used to be Gardens for All and all that over there. That whole area is the area they're talking, it will all be roped off, and the Legion will provide the bartender with the alcohol out there in that area, all roped off, and will serve alcohol all day for, and I'm sure they'll have picnic tables set up and stuff like that, but that's the location.
So, it's not as though they're, they're walking along the parking lot?
No.
It's a totally separate, separate bar.
In that fenced-in area will be the whole activity, to where you can buy a drink in a paper cup and walk around at the booth all day and do whatever you want. They'll, it'll be a two-acre roped-off area.
Okay, good deal. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, takes care of that one.
And that's just a one-day promise for all.
Okay, fire protection, Mr. Mel.
Yeah, I sent everybody, uh, kind of a sample here, and what I have here are a cover letter and two copies of each agreement, which I, which I'd like you to use this set, and so you need to sign two agreements for each town.
That doesn't require a motion, that just requires signatures. So, while we're passing that around, I can move on to recycling service.
And the recycling service, uh, similar deal, except this is with four towns. Uh, Pantin, Ferrisburg, Addison, and Waldham, and there's a cover letter, uh, that I've prepared, and two, uh, uh, two copies of each, uh, contract for each town.
Okay, um, everybody like surprises?
Depends.
I got an email from Joe, uh, making some comments about the city park, and was wondering if, uh, something could be done to it prior to, um, Virgin's Day. Um, time is limited, and I would like to set up a work night, tomorrow night, for anybody that could come attend, bring your gloves, um, I'll bring some tools. I left a message for the guys down in City Barren, I'd like to borrow one of the trucks, dump trucks, so that we can throw some stuff. It's mainly pulling weeds out of gardens, I got a hedge trimmer, I'm gonna do some trimming of hedge, throwing the stuff in the back of the truck. Um, starting at six-thirty, uh, if it rains tomorrow night, we're gonna switch it to Thursday. If it rains Thursday night, then we will have to come up with a new day, but I'll communicate that out if necessary. So, um, hopefully, the public will get a chance to view this tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock, and, uh, come join us. and, uh, come join us. Um, it's, it's nothing, it's just weeds in some cases have overrun and, and they need to just get pulled in, in most cases. The rest of the hedge trimming, I'll do with my, my clippers, they've got hard. Yep, yep. Uh, the spirea needs definitely attention and, and the other greens need some attention, so. A little bit- Mel, I was there and I don't, I don't know if the timer's off, but the lights were on at the, at the monument. So I think it's stuck and they're on twenty-four seven. So I, I don't know if we can put a, uh, photo Y, pop that, back of that timer and just control it on a photo Y versus a, uh, timer. Okay? Um, a little bit of, um, quick report on boating, visiting the docks. Uh, we've had three hundred and forty-nine power boats, uh, this summer and a hundred and thirty sailboats, total four seventy-nine. Uh, this is much lower than last year at this time and we've had, uh, some boats that actually have come in and the, when the docks have become busy or full lately. Uh, it, it all started pick, really picking up after, uh, about the July fourth or slightly after that. Um, Mel was gonna get in touch with, uh, North End Job Corps about getting some additional docks made. We haven't heard back from, I don't think you've heard back from Tony yet.
No. I can prod him on Friday.
Uh, I, I hope to be there Friday as well. They don't know I'm coming, but I may surprise them. Um, we haven't seen the Moonlight Lady except for early in the season, but I heard rumor they're becoming in shortly, uh, so.
Yeah, there's a wedding coming in September or something. And, uh, I actually sent Mike Shea an email just to clarify cause, you know, there is somebody that is, is gonna get married at Vergens Falls Park and, uh, so I, uh, there was some confusion as to which side of the, which side they were gonna be married on because really the McDonough Drive side is the one that's really equipped for that boat to, to, to be docked, but she's getting married the other side. So I just told him that, yeah, he, it just needs to coordinate that with the Public Works crew. But I think it, it's September or something. It's, it says no, no conflict with any of the dates that were, uh, uh, that the council set that, uh, that they were not to be there.
Oh, there's three signatures on this.
The, uh, Vergens Fire Department, uh, took a tour of the, uh, blast area last night and other locations underneath the bridge. Michael, Peter Michael Clapp brought home a few, uh, treasures. You didn't find them yet.
No.
Uh, from underneath the bridge, some old ironwork, uh, trying to figure out what it is, something historic. He was gonna deliver them to somebody else that might be able to figure it out. But, uh, it was very interesting to see what they're doing, what they have done and what they're going to do. Uh, and they're under, under a very tight window because that copper dam needs to come down before we get ice and so, and I'm told the project will actually go until, um, they've got to do certain things, uh, so that they can release water to go over part of the falls and that, uh, the project will go until next spring. So they'll be working through the winter on this, so.
Cool, they're cool to work.
Vergens Day, um, August twenty-eighth, as I mentioned before, uh, there will be a, a person that will be receiving, uh, an award from the city and, uh, ask all citizens and, and board members to try to be there to, uh, at ten-thirty, ten, ten-thirty, it's supposed to happen at ten-forty-five. So, uh, we can, uh, give this person the, by all means, the, the best surprise for her as can be. It's gonna be right at the bandstand, so. Um, and again, we could use any help, um, setting up and tearing down, uh, with Vergens Day. Marguerite would be the contact where you can ask her where she needs the help, so. Um, anybody else have anything else they want to mention? Randy?
I would like to, uh, thank the Public Works crews for all their hard work that they're doing with their sidewalks and the appropriate landscaping that has to go around all that. They've got a large task they're working on.
E- even though you've got an earful from some of your neighbors?
Yes.
What was that, I mean, what, what have they been doing?
The sidewalk, uh, most of Nehaven Road, uh, probably fifteen hundred feet, I would say, close to.
That's about what they chew off of the rack, fifteen hundred. Yep. Oh, by all means, uh, they are, uh, they're really hard workers, so. Okay? If not, I'll ask for Lowell to make the motion.
Motion for adjournment, please.
And, uh, ask for a second?
Second.
Ziggy, you made the second. All, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.